Okay. So we're going to reconvene the board selectmen meeting from November, September 12th, 2022 at 6:38. If you would all please join in. Call me Kelly on Nicole and saying the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any visitors comments other than items that we're going to be discussing at the agenda? Does anyone have any comments? Under old business, we have the cable buildup and contract renewal. Good, how are you? Thanks for waiting for us.
Oh, no problem. Thanks. This is a little back in time, isn't it?
[laughing]
That's it.
So Nicole, the contract has gone to town council?
Yes.
We don't have it yet back?
I know.
You did have the red line draft. Did you have to still?
I honestly, it did not look thoroughly through it, to be honest with you.
Yep.
There wasn't too much that we were tweaking from the last one?
No, I think the-
So.
The big item we had was that we want to talk about before is to serve-
To serve all the unserved.
Yes.
And the franchise fee.
Correct. Right. Some of the money in the franchise free account to do, to complete the build up.
Correct.
Yes. So are we voting on that today?
We should.
Yes.
Whatever one, if you do vote on it, I'll add that to the franchise. It'll be part of the franchise.
Of the contract?
Yeah, that will build them up within two years, whatever the-
Okay.
And what the addresses are.
You were nine, there were what, nine?
Seven.
No, seven.
Four residential, three commercial. So we had, our proposal was we would build the four, we wouldn't do, we don't do the commercial. We would do the four residential. And that was a cost of-
A percentage, correct?
Yeah, so we would cover, so I think the total cost was $24,600.
No, I have it. I just, I didn't think to. No, I have all my notes in it though. Yeah.
Yep, so $24,600.
And are those the addresses?
Yeah.
Do you mind if I just peek at them?
No, where's that? So that's the body then?
Mm-hmm.
And then this, this is going to be LNS, right?
I thought there was someone, my glasses. I thought there was someone down in Taylor Hill Road that wasn't serviced. Can you look into that person, that, that address, Taylor Hill Road?
That didn't come up as a, so no, they could be, they might not have chosen to have our service, but they have, they could get service.
No, there, I would have swore on the last build, there was someone at the very end of Taylor Hill Road that was unreachable.
So some addresses were built out after we completed our build. Some people had paid for them. This is what we came up with when we went back in.
Okay, okay.
But I can have construction look at it again, but they, I told them to start from when we were, whatever, so it's Taylor Hill Road.
Taylor Hill Road, I just wanna, yeah. If you don't mind just double checking that one.
Do you have an address?
It could be the end of it. It would obviously begin to vary, I think. It, just if we can double check it.
Of course.
It may be, like you said, they may have paid for it. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. So this is, when I asked them, this is what they came back with, just these addresses. But I will certainly have them taken a look for me.
Rob was going to reach out to them to find out whether they want the service or not. So the franchise- They do want it, the routing guy?
Yeah, and I would say, I would service anyone that's unserved.
Right.
Just for, you know, resale value for just, if you don't get it now, like, we're not getting it. We have the funds and the, um, right.
So the commercial ones, the cost of those, like?
You have, there are some numbers on here. I don't know if that matters.
So this is, that's, this is for the residential. That's residential. So these two commercial were?
But now this looks like, this is a commercial. So I think that's the routing unblocked.
Right, and that's got a, that's got a rate. That's $15,000 for this one. Because there's a railroad permitting problem that way. So that's a little, it's more time consuming and it gets, it's more expensive.
Because of the railroad, yep.
Yep. And then, these two down here, the 1550s for these two, for the clean road. And the 2,600 feet off, that's one. So, well, 1,300 feet off, that's a possibility. Compared to the 600. So for this one, it's, the 8,600 is the two residential passings.
Yep.
And the one commercial customer is an additional 15K for the railroad crossing. So what I'm assuming is happening, they're going to build up to, they would build to the commer, the residential, and that's the 8,600. And then, so all that work's going to be done, is it gun glove above them, past them? Is it work before them?
Um, the, kinda, it's just on the other side of the road, but there is a railroad crossing.
So then there's, so that comes into the, that's the 1500, $15,000 for the railroad permit that we would have to get to cross over to finish bringing service to them.
Okay.
I did have, I asked business services to reach out to them to see if they could do anything for them. Because sometimes they have different, they have different numbers and metrics. But like, we offer, so if any of these are lawn drops on the residential, we would credit $1,400 per lawn drop. They're not saying they have, I don't know.
They said, well, I don't know if this is-
They're saying no to these ones, so that wouldn't come play.
Right, right.
But business services has, they can play around with it. They do different things with their numbers. And I think they give a $7,500 credit if it's a lawn drop. But that doesn't affect the $15,000 for the railroad. That's not going to do anything. So it doesn't really matter. And then the other two commercials would be 1530, so it's, so it's 24, it's 24, 600 for residential and another 30. 1550.
So 30,000, 500?
Yeah, 30, yeah, 30,500 for them.
So we'd be responsible for them?
We would be responsible. So Comcast said on the residential that we would pay $9,840 and you would pay $14,760. So if you take the $14,760 and we add the 15, the 30, right, the 35 to that, that's what the town would be responsible for, we decided to do that. And then depending what that other, if there is Taylor Hill Road, whatever that cost is, I can figure that out and figure out the math to see, could we cover a portion of that one too? Like we do with the other ones.
And I just talked about the franchise fee as well. What's currently in our, what did we talk about for the franchise?
We actually talked about going down.
Yeah.
Because we haven't been really utilizing the PEG account.
Right.
And it's a fee that just gets pushed onto the users.
Where are we currently at? Four?
Do you have the old fr-?
Oh, sorry.
I think it was four, I thought we talked-
Oh, we have a blank in here because this is a new one. Um, do you have the old franchise? I didn't grab mine.
No, I don't.
I think it was four.
Four sounds right, but I don't-
Because I think we talked about going to three.
Yeah, it's right here. It needs to come through some like, like I asked.
Sure. I would first make a motion to allocate $45,260 out of our PEG account to complete unserved, commercial and residential customers of Hardwick. And then also make a motion to go from 4% to 3% for our, what's that called?
Franchise fee.
So I will, let's see, each motion has its own. So I will second the first motion to use $45,260 out of our PEG account to provide service to those that are unserved in residential and commercial. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll also second the second motion, which introducing our PEG access support or reaches need from 4% to 3%. Do you happen to know what the financial impact would be of that?
Yep. Do you have a Wi-Fi password? I can pick it up.
I can only get on guest.
Okay, so I can get on guest.
Because we, we went through all that in one of our last meetings.
Yeah, I just didn't, for whatever reason, I didn't provide everything I needed here.
But I can get on. Perfect guess.
Okay.
I guess we went through, we went through what it would be increasing and increasing. And it's, and again, it's a fee that gets pushed on.
Exactly. So we just want to make sure that we continue to have revenue to pay.
So Hardwick, we have Hardwick Wireless too. That's a lot, a lot, a lot.
Yeah.
It says enter the network security.
No, it's just Hardwick Guest. It's not Hardwick Secure Guest, it's Hardwick Wireless or Hardwick- And you were also going to remove the courtesy, the courtesy count. Have they removed, but you're putting, putting that?
I put that language back in and they're still listed. So you guys, you just need to tell them if you want to. Okay, so, and 4%. So if we take year 2021, because I have all the complete numbers for those quarters, it was 10,310.72. 10,058.80. 10,446.91. 10,493.67. So that, is that 4%? So.
Does that make sense? I used to say 30. 4% was 4,000, 3% was 30.
I can hold your last statement. If you use the last statement, that's the easiest way to do it. So your last statement was? This?
What? That.
Yeah, so, right. And there's still money in that account. So. That's why we figured we could actually, you know, go down on it.
And that fluctuates every quarter, the numbers, it fluctuates.
Right. Yeah.
So it's based on the gross. So a check was just received recently here, so it would have been. I don't know, 42, 2022. Okay. So I guess you guys got a check. And the total gross revenue was $267,110.23. So if you take 3% of that number.
It fluctuates.
Yeah.
But you're still probably relatively around the 34.
Yeah, it just fluctuates 3% subscribers.
Well, that's about 8,000, 30.
So my motion stays. Sorry, it was, that's okay.
Well, it's good to know, isn't it?
Yeah.
So this is my only other question. If that street, Taylor Hill Road, there's a house there and you guys want it built, that number could change.
Right.
So you want to make a, so I don't know how you guys handle that. I don't know what that number is and I don't even know what's the house that has to be built, so.
Well, it's not, I mean, I think you would just need to let us know.
Yeah, of course, of course.
And we could, yeah.
Okay, all right. And then the only other-
So I just left, I mean, we're just going to complete our motion. So you made the motion, I seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Just so we know what the motion is.
So we're going to 3%?
We are.
Okay, now I'm going to write that on the agenda. And in the last contract, it was graduated over 10 years. Like you started at a lower percent and after a couple of years, you guys went up a bit.
So what do you, to, to get to four?
Well, no, like, under the last contract, it goes up. So under the last contract, in years one, two, and three, you were at 2%. Years four, five, six, and seven, you were at 3%. In years eight, nine, and 10, you went to 4%.
I think it's going to be doing the ability to go back in-
Well, yeah, in 10 years.
Yeah, in 10 years.
That's the average of what we did the past three years.
Two, three, yeah.
So overall, we'd be ahead of the game in 10 years.
And then the only other language, in section 6.5, which is a PEG access video origination capability, we put that back in if you guys wanted to. Under the last franchise, you could build a video return line, so you could go live or have a studio in town hall. And when it was due, the town said, no, we don't want to build it. So we had a letter saying, no, we're not going to build it. So that language is still in there, because you guys were talking to me, you might want to do it. The way it was going to be paid for was the cost associated with the construction, activation, and maintenance of the PEG access video origination return line would be considered franchise-related cost, which means it would be passed through to subscribers over the course. So I took that out. I don't know how you guys want to pay for that. I don't know if you want to put it back on the subscribers.
Do we need it if we're doing what we're doing now?
But do you not want to have the ability in eight years if you want to? Well, I don't think it hurts to put it in.
Yeah.
If, if we're going to do it. I mean, it doesn't say we have to, but if-
No, 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 you don't have to.
If you decide that you want to do it.
But I'm not sure about, um.
That's how most towns do it, right?
No, in some towns, we, we give them a figure and then they said they agreed to pay what it is. And we just work it out with them, because that's what the cost is going to be.
So you don't pass that to, you don't pass that to them?
Not, not, I can't, not in my recent franchises.
Then can we leave the language like this as it is?
Yeah, just, you take out the cost, passing it through. I had already, I deleted it.
You know, you deleted it.
Yeah, because I just wanted to bring it to your attention, so you guys would know I did that.
Yeah. So that gives us the ability to revisit this if we leave this up?
Yeah, I mean, just, all it's saying is that upon six months of notice, we will construct this. So if you give us notice, we have six months from then to do it. And at that time, we would give you the cost and it would be on you to pay for it. So I guess we might want to put language that the cost would be the responsibility out to town.
No, I don't even, okay. No way, it's written like that? Right?
Because if, if we did it through an FRC, it's going to, people would notice it would be never reasonable. So I guess the other thing is the, um, the public buildings on the cable system. So these are where you want to have the cable, the free cable. So right now, we, right now, we've listed the fire department, the highway department. Are they in the same building or is it different room?
Two different buildings.
Okay. I don't know what street, we don't have street numbers for them, but. The town hall, the youth center. But the youth center is here now, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so it should be three years of the main street?
Mm-hmm.
The rescue squad is no longer.
The rescue school.
So I can delete that, okay. And the elementary school. The public library. NP Memorial Library.
Other near building that should be on here. Recycling.
EPW.
That's the highway.
Oh, okay.
Should recycling be on here?
Probably. Do you have an address?
Yeah. I'm working on highway right now. That's 165 is highway.
Highway's not just one. Recycling is 2011 Barre, B-A-R-R-E.
Well, so is it Hardwick Fire Department?
165.
When you Google it.
It's on Peter Shamro.
But they're both on Peter Shamroad, but they both can't have the same address.
We'll get to the updated press.
So what I'll have to do with the recycling, just to see if it's a standard installation, like where it is and move on to the standard installation, so I'm sure to add them.
What about the townhouse?
179 is highway.
And 165 must be fire.
Yeah.
What about the townhouse?
We would like Wi-Fi.
So it's you have cable and you have Wi-Fi. So what's the street address of the townhouse? 32 Combs. And Eric suggested the Page Building.
Is that Page Memorial Library?
No.
Just the campus.
What is that building?
It's quite a fair.
Do you know the address?
I'm looking, I'm looking at, um, it's Common Street.
It's like 13.
That's the townhouse. No, that's called the Page Building.
I can get it for you.
No, I'm not, it's not.
I'll have it in a second.
So is this a pub, this is a building old by the city?
Yeah. Oh, it's on Berry Grove, so it's on the corner. That's why we thought it was on Common, so it's gonna-
18-B-A-R-R-E.
Okay, so I'm going to have to have my construction team go out and look at all of these new addresses to make sure that there's no, that it's a standard installation and no construction's needed.
It should be.
If there's construction needed, that would be borne by the town. If it's a standard installation, we'll just take care of it.
Okay.
And it's one outlet, it's for cable services, it's not, it's not anything else.
So it's just right cable?
We have to pay for it.
Right, they, right, you guys, exactly, 100%. Yep, 100%, you can do that.
Okay.
Uh, there was service at the townhouse when the seniors were there. They had TVs and-
Probably just reactivating it at that point, then.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that should be outside then.
Something in the middle.
Is there, is the senior center in a separate building now or?
It's, it would, they go to Berry.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah. There's something in the middle, right, right? Yeah.
What about the police? They're in the right tree.
Right.
Where they're at right now.
Lower Road?
I think they already have it.
Should we add it to the list, though, so that it's? Yeah.
They lost, they've got another. That's what, um-
But it should be on the list at least.
Right. Let's see, there's there, it's four.
Oh, what?
Four.
It's Lower Road.
Yeah.
It's four, it's four something.
That, that mean street?
No, it's Lower Road.
Hmm, so Co-op's 444. Is it 440?
I'm not sure, we may have to go.
They, someone probably, I don't know who you're texting, but they probably know.
What are you talking about, the road?
Yeah.
401.
The Co-op is 444, it can't be 401. Right. Can't be 401. Oh, right, right?
And she has it now, it has all the bills.
But it might still pop up on Google. What was it again?
The car, the car, she calls. No, card, card, she calls. Four oh two. Four oh two, lower road.
And what's the Page Building? That's a public building as well. What is, what is it used for? I'm just curious.
Just for the fair.
Fair, or, or, which has used it in the past, the Boy Scouts use it, the Girl Scouts use it.
But it's owned by the county.
It is.
I'm going to give you a call, too.
Um, it doesn't hurt, right, for trouble already on stage, but I think I can. Do you want me, um, I will send, I'll make these changes and send it back to you.
Okay. Um. We have to get on town council to make sure.
I can forward an updated draft to town council and tell me who it is. I don't mind doing that and say I need it back.
Because we need to, this needs to happen.
Yeah, I told him.
Yeah.
By October thirty.
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll send an updated draft?
Yeah, I'll send an updated draft, and I'm gonna, I'll just redline the new stuff, like I'm going to add in the franchise, do you get it? And the PEG access origination will add costs will be paid by the town. I will update the, this list. And I'm going to add what we're building.
Okay, and then just double check on that Taylor Hill Road. I don't know why that's just sticking in my brain.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Maybe they did do it on their own.
Do you know who lives there?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Perfect, so I'll get all that taken care of, I'll get it back to you, and then, I think, is there anything else?
I don't think so.
And you guys will get it to town council, or do you want me to send it to them as well?
No, you can send it to the poll, we'll poll for you and get them.
And who do you use for your town council?
APW.
Ah, okay. Do you know who you work with there?
David Jenkins.
I usually deal with Phil, he looks.
Yeah, I don't know him, he's a good guy.
I'm sure the wrong link's over there.
I've only dealt with Phil though. Thank you.
Thank you very much, so we should be in good shape to have this done on time.
Yeah, great.
Which is great, I appreciate that.
What will the timeframe of the build out be?
Two years.
Two years, within two years.
We say within two years of signing.
Yeah.
So, um, we won't wait, I mean, we'll start doing them as soon as we can, you know, like we'll apply for the poll licenses. But make ready work is super slow across the state, and that's what delays a building, because a building of this is very quick for us. But getting out of the licenses and the applications, that takes a while, and for the utilities to do the work they have to do. So that can take, you know, I have one building in Williamsburg, it's like three houses, and we're waiting to do our make ready already.
Yeah.
So, it's tough. And we, and we really don't, we don't have any control over that, so.
Not utilities, no, you don't.
No, so.
I know.
But we have a great relationship with them, so they're good about it, they keep us informed, so at least we can keep them informed about what's going, but we like to get these inputs as soon as we can, that's always our goal, so. So hopefully it will be less than two years. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All righty, we'll be in touch.
All right, thank you.
Take care.
You too. The next time you plan on making a request, the cost of, um, and also, it gets from forty to fifty dollars.
Yeah. So in your packet, you have an email from the treasurer that they looked at five surrounding towns, and they're all at fifty, so essentially, you know, we're just trying to stay with the times, yeah.
I would make a motion to increase our municipal lease charge to fifty dollars.
Effective immediately?
Effective immediately.
I will send that. On paper?
Aye.
Aye. Um, did we say we're going to defer the treasurer collective department update?
To the next.
Uh, under new business approvals, the ghost walk of October fifteenth to twenty twenty-two, rain date October sixteenth, and the special trailer treats trick-or-treating and date slash rain date. So I did reach out to the chief about the trailer treats and trick-or-treating. Um, I believe that I asked for preference on the date, and I don't think they care what date it is. I prefer not to do it on the thirty-first, though, that's Monday.
It's a Monday, Tuesday, Saturday?
Well, I think he suggested that either.
Sunday afternoon?
Um, I cannot remember who he told me was doing the thirtieth.
I think you said Berry.
Maybe New Brain Tree? Probably would want to be consistent with already what New Brain Tree does.
As long as they have enough coverage. Right.
Do we want to reach out to to whoever's coordinating the trailer treats? Or the Sorry, I'm struggling with things here.
Who is it? Lauren Mace has done it in the past.
Yeah, do we want to reach out to her and see date logs?
Okay.
Maybe we can propose, are you okay with the thirty, Sunday the thirtieth?
I'm fine with it, yeah.
Like that the parents could feed the kids?
Yeah.
And get them dressed and everything?
Yeah, we normally, we normally just make sure that the PD's got coverage, so.
So maybe either the twenty-ninth or thirtieth, I just don't see a difference.
I think the adults want to go out on the Saturday night and party.
Okay, so we have to confirm that up for our next meeting.
Sure. It's so funny, I never was able to change, I never thought you could just change it whenever you wanted.
Well, people are going to go whenever they want, and other towns have, have trick-or-treating on other days, so.
I mean, when I was a kid, I certainly would have liked to have it on the weekend.
But they, yeah, so.
But it was always like after school, whatever day it was.
Yeah.
So, New Brain Tree's setting there is tonight, they're doing October thirtieth as of last, but they can handle both towns on the same day.
So why don't we confirm with Lauren then what works best for all of them that are volunteering to do it, so.
Why don't we, why don't we kind of just say the thirtieth and just confirm that?
Okay.
Um, in terms of the ghost walk on October fifteenth, is there anything that we need to do relative to that?
No, I think it was just like, you know, happening in public.
We let the walk off Common Street.
Okay.
Uh, as we do for the trick-or-treating.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so the kids, you know, go across from the common to the townhouse and, um. If they put the barriers out for us, we can move them ourselves. And they can leave them for the trick-or-treat right out.
I'm just messaging you, I want to make sure that they're showing me that.
Yes.
So that's it, just talk about for.
Do you want a motion pending PD approval done?
Sure, yeah.
Um, I would make a motion to approve the ghost walk for October fifteenth or the rain date of October sixteenth, and also trails of treats and tricks, or trick-or-treating, whatever it's called. For, um, the thirtieth, pending, um, Lauren, is it Mace? Lauren Mace?
Yeah, she already reached out to me.
And her, right, so just pending that, that's good with their.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, discussion and or vote relative to our vote on that? So why don't we, um, so can we, why don't we squeeze in conversations and conversations listening during the meeting? So, um, thank you for your long
Sorry about that.
Email.
I thought the first thing was an apology for three pager.
So, um, we got this this afternoon, and based on the concerns, certainly felt like it was appropriate to have you guys in tonight during the time frame that we're under. I know Nicole reached out to you and had a conversation with you about this earlier today.
Yeah.
Um, and, my glasses keep popping, I just want to sit up here. And so we have reached out to Nicole, do you want to talk about who you reached out to in the discussion relative to?
I reached out to DPC Engineering and Greg Corbo, I gave it to them both for them to review. Um, I didn't get the chance to talk to Greg, but DPC Engineering had reached out to DEP. Obviously, they, you know, all those guys know each other, and they have relationships with each other.
Yeah, and I can add that DEP did call after that, because I had, I talked to him a couple of times, a wetland circuit rider that basically gives us guidance. And, um, he did even call me, because he said he would call to acknowledge, you know, if he got into any more conversation or discussion, and they did call. So I knew that.
Yeah.
Who's Greg? He's the, is he our?
Not Greg, yeah, he's our attorney, but Justin Skelly from DPC Engineering is who I spoke with today.
Yeah, Justin and Jeremy, I know that part, I was just trying to remind myself of what the name Greg was attached to.
He's our, he's our counsel for this project. Not for the whole, not for everything in town, just specifically for this project. And, um, so, uh, Justin spoke with DEP and said that, um, he, he's, he does want them to, so they want the town to withdraw the NOI, because it's, it's partly changed. So the parcel changed, the street name changed, and they should just have a new DEP file number. So, um, there's no problem with that, it's not going to affect them, you know, it's not any extra work, because a lot of this stuff has become extra work for them over the past few months that costs us more money, so. He said, he mentioned that the proposed construction work is pretty straightforward, buffer zone work from a wetlands permitting standpoint. And, um, he, you know, obviously hopes that the controversial nature doesn't affect the review of the project. It should just be in relation to the Wetlands Protection Act, and he's echoed the sentiment to conservation. So we are going to withdraw the NOI and submit a new NOI for the, you know, to make the deadline for the October nineteenth hearing. And so that's what we are going to go with now. So we're still going to, we're still going on with our, with our bidding. It, we need this permit before the shovel goes in the ground, so that won't be until early spring. So, with that being said, um, you know, I, he did say that a lot of these concerns weren't conservation concerns, that they, you know, their jurisdiction is the wetlands, and, you know, some of those things have been answered in the past that I have the answers to, such as odor. So those are, you know, that's kind of like old news.
Yeah, so you and I talked about a bunch of this, so since I pushed the three-page memo on you guys at the last minute here, well, not so much at the last minute, but it was in time for this meeting, which makes it last minute for this meeting. So let me say, this was just me trying to get out some of what's been going around in my head. You know, we feel kind of, Nicole heard this from me already. You know, that there's been a lot of discussion about the project over time, we've all been involved in meetings, you've invited us to select board meetings and presentations. But we never got to the point of specifics for our, from our point of view. And so in wetland permitting, right? So now we're there, and it's right down to the last minute, right down to the wire, and we're feeling the pressure, because there's a couple of things going on for us. One is, we have our responsibilities under the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act, right? Which, our, we'll say that's, that's one responsibility here. Another thing recently that we've been wrestling with is these memos, as we discussed. Article twenty-two, which was a, the result of a town vote back in nineteen ninety-eight. The associated memo, which I think was right after that, whether it was in ninety-eight or ninety-nine, but it was the Page Agricultural Trust. So we have these things, and that's a separate thing from our wetland responsibilities, and we're trying to figure out, you know, what, what those responsibilities might have been that we were assigned. And we need some opinions on that, that's why I basically requested, uh, legal opinions. Because I can see, and I was really, um, pretty, pretty afraid of walking into a September meeting and having a room full of people expecting us to interpret that. What does that mean? Do we have responsibility for that side of the common? What does conservation purposes mean? What about the Page Agricultural Trust? I don't know much about the Agricultural Trust, but I do know enough to know that they were elected, so I'm not sure what that meant, so. That's why, that's why you see my list, our list, which I tried my best to capture last night on paper. Asking for some involvement of town council, can we get some opinion on these things? And of course, there's always, the, um, the very first thing I mentioned was the fact that, of course, as you know, we have, um, and, and this gets back to something you said to me on the phone about the number of people on our board, right? We have three members on our board. And you and I talked about a quorum, and we said, well, we have to be a little careful, because we have two members, and you were thinking that was a quorum. Well, that's not really true, because officially, we have a five-member board. Unfortunately for us, we're down to three people. So we need three people for a quorum, we don't have the luxury of having somebody be sick, we have to end up canceling a meeting. We lost our fourth person, we didn't have a five, a fifth person for a long time, we lost our fourth member, Nick, because of health reasons. And so then we were down to three, and so we have to do something about that. But anyway, we don't have a quorum tonight, there are two of us here to answer questions about this, or discuss, or just help clarify. We, we appreciate, you know, anything we can get. As you know, Becky has consulted the Ethics Commission.
We voted, we voted on it.
We did vote as a board, so just to kind of give you our, where we're at, where we're at with this.
Sure, yeah.
So, um, we did vote, last meeting or the meeting before, to, the board voted to authorize Becky to participate in this decision. We can put something in writing, it's, it's in our minutes.
Yeah, I think that, that would be important to us, well, actually, you can speak to us.
I need that disclosure form.
I know, they just didn't sign it at the last meeting, because I wasn't here, so they're signing it tonight, and I'll give you a copy.
Okay, just to be fair.
And then one copy will also go in your conservation file for this project.
Yeah, that would be great.
Because this is a very important thing, and I don't want to be accused of conflict of interest from the head of the board.
Understood, understood.
One hundred percent, we get it.
Yes, and
We get it.
Bill also requested confirmation from the town attorney that I would like something in writing.
Can we get something from town?
Yeah, you know, he did, he got it at three o'clock this afternoon, so.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying that I would really appreciate having that, and I would be lucky.
Yeah, and you know, I mean, you just got this heartwarming, it was early afternoon, and this arrived in your inbox, so I don't, we don't expect that you've had time to really study this or read it and digest it. It was my attempt to try to lay out for the record, and I know it's long, probably longer than most people would write. And I'm tired, and I'm tired enough to prove that I had to think this through. How to word some of these things and get some of these thoughts out of my head. So, you know, there are two tracks going on, one is our wetland responsibilities, and one is what we may or may not be responsible for with respect to the common, but those are two things. And then the third thing, really, that you had to suffer through reading, or you will suffer through reading, is some of the things that we, um, expect when we review our projects, right? And some of these, some of these, like, you're aware that, for instance, we've been dealing with two commercial solar projects on the west side. There's been a lot of engineering and design work for something like that, just like for this, just like for the mill. And just, uh, just like, say, the McDonald's gravel proposal. So we end up benefiting from all the stuff that gets produced for those submissions for the other boards. So for instance, the gravel proposal, you know, a drainage study, or the solar proposal, a drainage study, the hydrological stuff, the calculations, all of that stuff. Because some of it does relate to wetlands. Because some of it does relate to wetlands, and we appreciate seeing it. So by summarizing that here, you know, I tried to make the point that there are some things that stand out in my mind, just as I know they stand out in your mind. The biggest thing would have been odors. And I, and I mentioned, I've been by sewage treatment pumping stations in recent times and smelled odors. So that makes me wonder, you know, what about the future of the common? Is there engineering that shows how this plant will operate? Is, you know, I mentioned things like an operation and maintenance plant. Haven't seen any of that, right? Maybe you all have, or, but I know I've heard also in the meetings that, of course, the boards that we usually rely on, like the planning board or the board of health, which require some of this documentation, they're not apparently participating. So I don't know, you know, are these documents produced by engineers? Who's reviewing this so that we can trust, because we haven't seen it yet, that it's not going to leak, there won't be blowouts, the pump won't go down, and the stream will be contaminated? There'll be a ventilation problem, and there's odors on the common, those kinds of things. You know, odors on the common are a good example where that has nothing to do with wetlands. We understand that. That's not part of our decision with wetlands. That's not part of what we're reviewing. But depending on what our other responsibilities might be for the common, people may expect us to be asking those questions. I don't know.
So let's, let's talk about the 1998 vote. That is with town council. So town council had rendered an opinion on that piece of the plan. We said that, we didn't vote to that. We have not received the opinion. We're waiting on that opinion. So we've already, we're proactively looking at that.
Terrific.
So we get that that's a concern. Obviously, it's a concern for us because we have to understand.
Yeah, we've already thought about it.
Yes, so we are looking at that. You know, we certainly, I'm not sure we forwarded this to Justin, but, or DPC. We probably should.
Oh, yeah, I sent it to-
You did.
I sent it to Justin.
I didn't know if he was verbally talked to them, or you-
Oh, no, I sent it, and then he called.
We have an email. We have the response.
Okay, well, apparently I didn't get it.
No, because I sent it at like 5:30.
Okay, so, and, and I will say this, as I said to other people sitting in the room. Put your concerns down. You know, understand, I don't take the situation you're sitting in lightly because I know the situation we're sitting in, and it, there is no good seat to sit in.
No, I totally got that from watching the meeting, the recorded video from the last meeting.
The only good seat to sit in maybe is USDA or somebody else. It's not anybody in this. And, and, you know, the intent is not to try to, what we've been tasked with, where we are at, and this is through conversations that Nicole has had recently with USDA. Our last meeting, a new site came up. And we explored that with USDA and said, another site came up. What we hear is we cannot stop this project from moving forward. They are very concerned that we're not going to make the five-year timeframe. If we don't make the five-year timeframe, we have a problem. And-
And if this project doesn't go well, the other two projects aren't happening.
Right, and so understand-
They're yanking the funds.
We understand the concerns. Honestly, if, my, my thought would be, let's find us a place that works for everybody. We can't do that. We, we've been told we've got to move forward. So not the ideal spot. Understood. I get it. Nobody wants it in their backyard. I understand. I wouldn't want it in mine either, so I understand. Those are the, those are the options we were presented with. We've been told by USDA, we cannot ask for an extension for another site.
What was the other option? You said options?
Yes, there are two options. One was right, the original location, which we didn't own the-
Right on Hardwick Road.
Right on Hardwick Road.
So as I, as I look through the, the bid plans and have been reading the orders of conditions, there was also an alternate that states, I believe, to upgrade the pumps at the school. So this would be alternate number two, having a pump station at or near the common.
So, so-
Is that according to the-
We're talking, oh, we're talking about location now.
I'm talking about, is it necessary?
We can't go there.
Yes, we can.
We cannot, so, so we cannot go there because USDA has told, so the engineers have put together the plan. USDA engineers have reviewed the plan for the current, whatever they've set out for the bid package. Whatever plan is in place is what we have to go with per USDA. We cannot change the plan at this point.
Yes, well, I think you could certainly modify it. And I don't think that the engineering company has taken into all considerations. For one, now, I don't know, I don't know if this is possible or not, but we have an emergency generator that sits up at the, at the highway mark. That, and I know, could be wired to there, to whatever location on the common, as well as a remote power box. Now, all of a sudden, a 12-by-16 outhouse is all of a sudden flush with the ground. There's, I'm not saying that this is doable, but has that been considered?
Honestly, I, I don't know. That's the engineer's responsibility.
It's, it's the town's responsibility to have a consultant to discern what this engineering company that the town hired is telling us is correct.
So I'm not going to entertain this discussion tonight. This is, understand your concern. I understand your concern. We're here to talk about the Conservation Commission's concern.
Okay.
I'm not discounting your concern at all. I hear it loud and clear. We've been down this road. We were, in no certain terms, told at the townhouse by USDA, it was, came out of USDA's mouth. They would not allow an outside review of this. I'm not sure the exact terminology. It was asked by two or three people.
And that's accepted by a town council? We, we have tax dollars. We hold a loan. The USDA is responsible for the plants and the, the water entering the Ware River, and we don't have any say in what happens in, in the center of town?
We've hired an engineering firm.
Yes.
USDA has reviewed, USDA engineers have reviewed, provided oversight on this engineering firm. So USDA is providing, USDA will be providing you oversight on this project until our loan is repaid.
Is it a federal loan?
Yes, it's USDA money.
Yep, and so there's a loan. Does it grant? So the, the loan is also federal money?
Yes, USDA is a federal-
The USDA funds are federal. The state grant is state money. The $5 million is state money, and then the, the other is ours.
Okay.
We've already received the state money. That's actually sitting in the bank, waiting for this project to go. It was a requirement for us to get the USDA money back.
Is it required that they take the, what?
Since we've been over this board, just nobody's seen it, come and see me. I have all the answers. Trust me.
I don't trust anybody.
I, I'm, well, I'm saying, I'm saying, trust me. We are as frustrated with this process as you are. We, we've spent a year trying to get this money back for the town.
I, and it doesn't matter, and I'll tell you why. This is my personal opinion. If the town doesn't do anything with the wastewater, we go bankrupt. If we proceed with what we're doing here, from what I can see, with numbers that are two years old, I can expect that you are going to have to come back to the town at the end of this project and look for upwards, and I'm just guessing, five to eight million dollars, and we'll be bankrupt anyway. Is that, am I, am I-
We have voiced that concern very much so with USDA. They are well aware of the increasing cost of construction.
Yeah.
Very much aware.
And as an installer of these projects, I've installed them. I've done many of them bigger than this one. This, I am, I, I cannot believe what I'm seeing. It is overbuilt and not necessary. And nobody says anything about that. This is the USDA. Oh, who are, who are they? I know they control the press strings, but they shouldn't control the common, especially the common that sat there for 400 years. It's like putting an outhouse in front of the Lincoln Memorial. Oh, it has to go there. That's wrong. And I'm sorry, I don't buy it. There's something that is not right.
Would you like to sit in this seat?
No.
Then, please, understand. I understand your concern. We're not happy about it either. We have spent a year trying to get this money back.
In years, just trying to-
If this, if we do not get this money back, in no uncertain terms, we were told by USDA, we cannot modify the project. If we modify anything in the engineering plan, the project is done.
It's, that sounds like-
It's done.
Extortion.
It's a condition. It's a condition of the project.
Well, the condition of the project, and I'm only going to, it says, general conditions. It refers to, and it's not deleted that I can see, it refers to the upgrade of the pumps at the school. And now I can assume that those pumps are used during and for construction to make sure that that school is up and running. Otherwise, we'll have trucks running back and forth. Correct?
So can I ask, can I ask you to do something, and I will ask the same I've asked of anybody else who's come to me? Please put your concerns in writing. Please put your concerns in writing so we can ask questions and get them addressed.
Okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
It's nice that we have this conversation. I appreciate that you're here. You're experiencing the same level of frustration that we've had this whole project. But please put your concerns in writing so we can try to address them. We're not trying to stick our head in the sand. When the additional site came up, we went back to the people who are involved in the project and said, there's another potential site. And what we heard is, the project cannot be stalled. It has to move forward. If it doesn't move forward, our funding is gone. We still are in jeopardy of losing the funding. We still are. It's very clear in the LOC if you read it that we're in jeopardy. So please put your questions in writing to us.
All right.
And we will-
Other than, other than the design thing, so nothing can interrupt this at all. Like, we can dig up a dinosaur over there. Oh, that's fine. We've got to still put it in.
So-
I don't believe that.
So the way we are approaching the project now is we have to proceed with the dates that are in the LOC. There are going to be delays that come up. I don't work in construction, so I don't know, but other folks do understand that delays are going to come up. We're going to handle them one by one with USDA when they come up. But we have got to show forward progress with this project.
So typically, on a project this size, I would guess that there would be between 5% and 15% cost overruns for unforeseen hiccups. That's not uncommon. That money is on the town. Also, the fact that the numbers have been used here are a couple of years old. We all know what the recession is. I also know that the mechanicals in the project are a huge lead time, and there will be some delays. I'm just telling you that.
We, and USDA understands that, but we, we have to continue to, you know-
We have to show good faith in moving forward with this.
We're trying to be transparent on this side, and we're also trying to be very transparent with USDA and let them know, you know, how the project is progressing. We understand there's going to be delays. They understand too, but we're in communication moving forward. Understand all of your concerns. We've talked about them. I can imagine if this project goes out to bid, we've, we've, as Kelly said, we voiced our concern to USDA. USDA knows the town cannot afford an extra five to eight million dollars on the backend. Very clear. Very clear.
We also know how everybody would vote. Trust us. We know that too.
We made it very clear that it's a concern. It's been voiced to USDA. And what we have heard is that, you know, they can't commit to anything formally, but they, trust me, Washington is washing, watching what's happening here. This is a big profile project for USDA. If it were me in USDA shoes, I'd want to make sure that I was dotting my i's and crossing my t's because this is, and it's become higher profile because of all of the media coverage of this, whether it's our own papers, we're on YouTube talking about it now, or in our meetings. I can't imagine that if we get to the end of the project, they're going to leave us holding the bag.
Well, let's hope.
Eric, I, I don't, I understand. I, this is not why we're here to talk about it. We're here to talk about conservation.
I just want to make a statement.
Okay.
I put my statement in writing, and I just want to give you a heads up. The LOC, to his point about the pump station in Eagle Hill, there's nothing in this LOC that talks about a pump station on the common. The verbiage under the, under the Hardwick sewer system upgrade and pump station is all about, this is two, this is two-year-old language right here. This is all about putting two new pumps in and put the pump station at the school. Is that project one? So my question is, I don't know why they put that in here like this. But the problem is, and I'm going to, I'll put it down. You can go to DPC.
I asked you to put it in writing.
I will, but I'm just alerting you that this is, my question really is more, obviously, this is, they didn't do their, what they were supposed to do when they wrote this. The question is, are they intending to put, are they intending to do the upgrade to the Eagle Hill pump station on top of project one, which is the pump station on the common? And, as it turns out, the 3,300 feet of sewer main, that was never discussed in one single opening meeting because I was at a mall. Now, I knew it was there because it was part of the old, two-year-old four-phase thing. But now this is part of the plan, totaling over $4 million. And in their, in their, the cover sheet to the, to the bid package said that the estimated cost was $1.8 million. How do you go from $1.8 to $4 million? Okay, I'll put it in writing.
So the, so I will say this, the longer we don't get that, and I'm, I'm getting angry. I'm getting irritated, and I'm not getting irritated at you. I'm not getting irri, I'm irritated because we've talked about this.
We have never talked about this.
The longer we wait before addressing these issues, it's already been a few days since we've had this conversation. Please get it to me in writing so we can get it resolved.
I just realized that-
He needs to get it to Nicole because Nicole needs clarification from DPC.
We do.
Okay.
We can't answer it unless we have the specific concerns.
I just figured this out like last night.
Okay, fine.
I've read this a dozen times, and I went back to it, and I looked at it, and I said, this makes no sense. There is nothing in here-
Well, there are some errors in there.
What?
There are some errors in there.
Well, we need clarification on that.
The error is, they're not in the-
It's a bid package. There should be errors. Yeah, that's not a bid package. That's the LOC.
No, this is the LOC, but the LOC does not talk about a pump station on the common.
Like, Joe made a mistake with the users. You know, he just made a couple mistakes.
So please put it in writing so we can address it.
Along with a whole bunch of others.
Yes.
Yep.
We're not ignoring the question, but we need your specific concerns.
We're not getting anything accomplished here-
I got it.
-when you keep beating this up. So if, if the emails can go to Nicole, Nicole can get answers for you.
Please copy me on the email.
All right, but I'm sorry, the three of you, plus Nicole, need to be aware of what's going on. All right?
Understood.
So I'm going to send them out, but I'm still seeing all you guys.
Absolutely.
That's fine.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's not a problem. We're not, yeah, honestly.
But it's hard to keep rehashing it here, and then we're not getting what we need to get done. And there's more than the sewer project that goes on in the town. I know it doesn't seem like that lately, but Nicole needs to be able to run her office and everything else.
It is, it is, you are right. There is something more than that. And if we're not, wise and careful and have the right counsel, the towns will go bankrupt. And guess what?
I can assure you that I am working diligently. It's my full, full-
I'm not talking about you.
No, and I've worked for the town for years. There have been agencies working against the town. There have been agreements put together that have zero, zero positive impact on the town. I am never going to let that happen again. I am working for the town of Hardwick as hard as I possibly can, for the whole of Hardwick, for all of Hardwick. Not certain sections, not certain individuals, but for the entire town of Hardwick. That's my job. You'll, you won't see me in 40 years. You won't have any, you won't have anything to-
I'm not accusing you of anything. I'm saying that, I think, in my personal opinion, that we should have some kind of engineering consult that reviews this and criticizes it or says, this is good or this is bad, and work directly for the town, not- not for a hired engineering company.
We hired them.
So, I understand that. But their interest is making money. And we know, I know...
It's our money they use. It's public money too. It's, I, it's rural development. It's, I don't think that they're malicious either. I think that people are, you know, close guarded, maybe untrustworthy. But I can assure you that these are projects that happen all over the country, all the time. They're happening in other towns right now. This is a very normal thing to upgrade your public utility.
It's not a normal thing to desecrate...
It's not necessarily a normal thing to have no money to put into it, but it's, it is what it is. That's where we're at here.
So I, I...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry if I upset anyone.
No, it, it's the nature, it's...
This has been four or five years of this constant barraging. So it's, it's, well, from my sitting here in this chair. And so what you're experiencing is a little bit, a little, a little bit of the wear down. We have been, I personally have been under USDA scrutiny for a while and because of wanting to make changes at the board level. So what you're experiencing, the frustration is, we sort of feel like, understand that you have concerns. Understand that there's things that we may need to revisit. But we can't do that unless we have something to go to them with and say, "Look, is this correct?" So Eric's concerns about the LOI, put it in an email. We'll, we will go to Joe and say, "Joe, what's up with this LOI?" And go back to DPC.
Would they be, would they be receptive to, if someone came up with an idea that could possibly save the town? Couple million bucks?
I can't speak for them. And that's why we went back to them after our last meeting, where an additional location was brought up, and said, "Would you potentially..." Nicole, you can, you spoke to them, so you can say exactly what we heard.
They said, "We will never meet the deadline. This has been dragged on long enough." It's, 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 it's very frustrating to the agency as well because nobody has ever seen such pushback for millions and millions of free money. And that they don't see, you know, we can request it all we want, but they're going to deny it. And secondly, they're gonna say, "You can't even meet your first deadline? Or you actually wanna go back again after all of this?" I mean, I've only been here a year, but I have spent so much effort to try to get this project back off, off the, off the ground. And they are trusting that we are in a position that we're going to be able to do it. And if we keep wish washing and going back and forth, there is no doubt in my mind, and I'm gonna tell you what I, I talked to you today, right? I talked to Bill today. I was in a meeting last week with six other town administrators, small town administrative meeting. And I was telling them about my USDA money 'cause, you know, the day we said we got it all back, it wasn't televised. So it's like, nobody got to really actually see that. And they were all like, "Is that where it is? That's where it went?" 'Cause they're getting denied left and right 'cause there's no money. You know, they're getting denied. Nope, we're not giving it to you. I said, "Yes, $22 million." And they're very impressed because they're looking for six or seven, and, and they're being denied at this time, not at this time. So I think we're extremely lucky to have what we have. And that it's gotta move forward. It's part of the public utility. And if you, maybe people right now don't like it, but in 10, 20, 30 years, when Julie and Kelly's pictures are up on that wall over there for "Thank you for all your public service," we're gonna have a good utility where people can flush the toilet and know that it's going to go where it belongs and that it's gonna be treated where, the way it belongs, the way it should be. Because it hasn't been for all these decades. It's a public utility that simply must happen. And you know, I mean, God forbid, God forbid. I, I really hope it didn't happen. But if the project ever went off the rails and the, and USDA took the money away, and then the state comes in and they take over. And then, they're gonna do that project, but they're not gonna ask any questions. Maybe they'll put it right in the center of the common. I don't know. I'm pretty sure they put it right where it is 'cause it's the lowest part. But they're not gonna ask, they're not gonna ask, "What do you want it to look like? Do you want it to look like an old building, like the rest of the common?" They're not gonna ask any of those questions. They're not, they're just gonna do it the most economical and fastest way they can. The EPA will, and the state will do it. And it won't be done the way that we want it.
So we were here to talk about conservation concerns. And we sort of got off track a little bit. Again, I would just reiterate, if you have concerns, please send it in an email. We're not trying to stick our head in the sand. We are listening. I will listen to anyone who has any, anything to say about this. Certainly happy to have a conversation or an email or whatever. We get everyone's concerns loud and clear. Just please give us something so that we can follow up. We're not trying to ignore. We're trying to move forward. And, you know, if you have concerns or questions, I'd rather, honestly, I'd rather people ask the question because I don't wanna get to the end. We're in this position because of what has happened before, lack, perceived lack of transparency, perceived... It's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to move the project forward. Not everyone's gonna agree with it, and it's unfortunate. It would be great if we could put it in a perfect spot for everybody. And that's not where we're at, unfortunately.
Yeah, and this went out to council and to the engineers today. So you put it in writing, and we forwarded it along so we can get all the answers.
Yeah, we thank you for that. You know, so there, you consulted them. They'll read this, and they'll see what it is that we're looking for. The other aspect does seem to be in motion. We've been talking back and forth with DEP, and now you have the engineers talking to them to confirm, and they're gonna withdraw and resubmit a new notice of intent for this actual tract of land.
And it's not like it has to be immediate, you know? Don't feel like it has to be, you know, done immediately. We have, and we have a few months. So if you feel like you have other questions...
Yeah, well, I was feeling like, holy crap. We're talking about October 1st and bids and all this stuff and money. And I have to be honest, I was thinking like, "Whoa, this September meeting's got a heck of a lot of pressure on it." And I'm not looking forward to that. I wasn't even looking forward to writing this. But I decided, you know what? We're not gonna wait till the meeting to explain, you know, whatever concerns and problems we have. We better get it out now so that we can start looking at it.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Well, that's what you said before. So, you know, if town council has this, the engineers, you said you, you forwarded this to the engineers. The only thing that's left a little bit hanging is, you know, a lot of the things that I was using as examples, you know, about the future and the potential threats to the common or the stream, right? Do you think that the, that you can have? I guess two thoughts I have. One, can somebody, probably the engineers, look at those concerns and refer us to where there might be some information specific to this project where that's been thought about? I guess what I'm, what I'm wondering is, you know, if, if, and what I'm hearing is USDA is actually reviewing a lot of these plans, and they're happy with them, so we should be happy with them. Well, that's fine. But that doesn't help us see what they were happy with. It would be nice, just like, you know, we get whatever, you know, the drainage plan for the solar site or whatever it might be, the engineering for the gravel pit. We get that stuff. I wonder if there's anything that USDA writes up for themselves that they've reviewed a project, and this is what they look at, and this is why they don't think it's a problem for the community? It would help.
They will get these answers for sure. Stormwater drainage or whatever, you know, especially like the, the leaking. You know, I mean, all of, every single, every single, all of this stuff is in the ground. And it all, it is for everyone, every single town, right?
Right.
So they do ensure that that's not gonna happen. I think it's encapsulated, encapsulated, whatever. They'll get you those answers for sure.
Yeah, yeah, no question about, I mean, I'm sure we'll get answers. You know, I mean, a lot of us suffered through the landfill days. And, you know, we were told things then that a lot of us weren't too sure about, right? You know, "Trust us, these things never leak, no problem." "You, you folks downstream with wells, don't worry about a thing. This is state-of-the-art stuff, and we're late." Yeah, not gonna... So, you know, I mean, we're asking questions for the same reason that you guys have asked questions all along. You know, except we're coming in late 'cause we haven't been party to a lot of this, and we certainly haven't, haven't been sitting in, you know, I stated in here. We haven't been sitting in mediation with you. So, you know, now we're playing catch-up, but we've got a deadline staring at us, you know, with a notice of intent and a public hearing and all that kind of thing. So we're, we're trying to get that straight. If, if, if some of this stuff, you know, there's a question right there. Is there an operation and maintenance plan? How do we know, on behalf of the town, the people that we somewhat represent here from the point of view of the wetlands and possibly even, you know, the environmental integrity of the common? How do we know anything about the operation and maintenance of this thing in the future? And if it's gonna be done in a way that we don't need to worry about bullocks, leaks, pumps going down? We don't know anything about this. Normally, we would ask, like, we ask with the solar project, "What do we have for operation and maintenance, you know? Can we trust that we're not gonna have some kind of environmental contamination over there with the panels?" If we don't have anything to read or look at or see, you know, an evaluation by a third party or whoever, then we don't know anything. So that's all I'm saying.
That typically comes from the contractor that does the project. They have to provide that at the end of the project.
Yeah, well, I know, and I'm not telling you guys anything 'cause you're thinking about this too. That's a lot of trust, that, you know, once it's built, they're gonna provide some explanation and plans.
But it's in, and I'm just, I'm talking from a construction standpoint.
Yeah.
It's like, that's a requirement of our projects. When we do a project, at the end of the project, we have to provide. We don't get paid unless we provide it, right?
Provide what?
O and M.
What part?
An O and M.
Just in, oh, what, what part?
Yeah, all of it.
Especially an O and M plan, she's...
But what we don't, what, I think what you're talking about is, what about the town's maintenance in the future? After it's done five years, who's gonna run it?
So, so if you read the LOC, we're required to have an oversight agency. We cannot, it is not just our people running the system.
Oh, okay, well, that's something...
We have to have an oversight...
So we already budgeted, budgeted for that this fiscal year.
Yeah, well, those are things, of course, that we don't know about that we're, you know, we're, we're just learning about it because we're now being pulled into the project, right? It's our turn.
It has been spoken about at several different meetings, right? And I know it's hard, you can't make them all. I get it. I mean, I don't wanna make them all either, but...
Yeah, not only that, there's a lot of times, if I come to a meeting, I don't absorb it all.
It's a lot, it's a lot, it's a lot of information.
It's a heck of a lot, you know?
Yep.
So can, can I ask you, oh, go ahead.
So it would be interesting to see, you know, if there is or will be parts of an operation and maintenance plan or if there are some comments relative to whether or not, you know, what, what's the integrity of such a thing? And do we have to worry about contamination of streams or water or wetlands or air or any of that stuff? I mean, you know, I'm not telling you anything that you kind of don't know.
So, so I can tell you that a lot of the things, with the exception of the 1998 document, which is, you know, sort of been brought up within the last few weeks, last month.
Yep.
You know, a lot of these things have been addressed or been discussed with the engineers. It's just you, you haven't been brought up to see them. So I can tell you that in mediation, none of this was discussed. We were in mediation to get the LOC back. That is it.
Right, and then we're on for a year, and no one can ask questions. And all of a sudden, we're out of mediation, and now we got a pump station thing ran down our throats. So the, so the presumption that we're somehow not paying attention to this for a year is crazy because there was no way for anybody to talk about it. Now, all of a sudden, there's this huge rush. And now we're starting to ask questions.
Understood. And no one's accusing you of not paying attention. We have been, we focused our efforts for that entire year trying to get this money back. We were very close to, we didn't have the money. And then, once we emerged from this LOC, we had these strict deadlines where there wasn't a lot of time for contemplation and thinking.
For you guys to even, you know, pursue this or look at it hard or find somebody else to look at it, which really is what should have happened. But none of that could happen because of USDA's timing on this. That's the problem.
Well, it's again because of the deadline of, if, there's a sunset clause to all USDA money, and we are not gonna meet it if we don't get going. and we are not gonna meet it if we don't get going. So they said, get going.
And that's always, that's always been the case. Unfortunately, we wasted a year.
Right, but was that our fault? Was that your fault?
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, Eric.
I understand that, but for, for them to do all this demanding that you meet these deadlines, which are only forcing us to spend way more money than we need to, those drawings that they've submitted are ridiculous. There is more cost into that system than you can possibly imagine. And another question I would ask is, what if you, what if it comes back that Town Council says that that land is subject to Article 97? Okay, all right, I'll do it. I'm just asking right now, what if it comes back?
Then we have to deal with it.
What if they don't do it with it?
Okay, but how long is that gonna take? If you moved it up the hill 300 yards, you wouldn't have 97. You wouldn't have these guys. You could start building it tomorrow for Christ's sake.
So, so look at these three faces right here. We probably collectively have slept less than you have worrying about all of these issues, Eric.
Why not all four of us walk in USDA's door and ask them directly, why do we have to do it this way? We just need two more months to move it up the hill, save all these issues. We'd be further along than we would be for half the price.
Or not even, or not even you get to the door and the door is gonna slam.
I don't, I don't necessarily want that, I really don't, sorry.
We have spoken to them, put it in writing, Eric.
Okay, I will put it in writing.
We'll go back, I promise you, we'll go back.
Well, I just have-
Can I, can I back in?
We gotta wrap this up.
Yeah, we do, because we have other business to handle.
Well, I just have a question, is that what if it comes back that that land that is town land, where the fair is and the cattle ties, comes out that is not be able to be built on? It's protected. What happens then? You're gonna have to move the pump station. I mean, if Town Council comes back and says, because there's precedence and it's a town meeting vote, then you're gonna have to come up with another site.
But we don't have that answer yet.
Okay, but what, what do you think, though? If they say no, you can't build it.
Then we have to proceed-
So that's progress, though.
It, it's progress, but we, we have to take that step initially.
Okay.
And that's what we're doing.
But it seems like that, it just came out of mediation in June or July, whenever that, a few months ago?
Yes.
So this has been so rushed in two months to say, this is where it's going. You say, oh, we got it all, it's like, no. It was just decided two weeks ago that it was going to be put on the common there. You know, was it gonna be across the street, behind a historical building? There was a very good option to move it up the road where it would be off the common and you would satisfy almost everybody in town. Nobody's happy about it being on the common. Nobody.
So, so we do, we do understand that. The sites were reviewed long before.
But it wasn't brought to us?
It, so it wasn't, it, it was the engineers. Rob was involved in that. There were several people involved in site identification.
Well, that wasn't, it was gravity fed and now it's not gravity fed, so it doesn't have to be on the common. If it's a pump station, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be in the lowest spot from where I'm, I'm not an engineer.
I'm not either.
But that's why-
I'm not either.
Okay, so putting on the common is a travesty.
I don't disagree, Becky.
The USDA knew that they always wanted it there because it takes more than two weeks to draw these things. They had just drawn up a lot of them. That's-
So we're gonna go to Town Council with this information.
That information, right?
And, and the 1998 vote to get-
Yeah, that's a town meeting vote.
To get direction. I can't stay up worrying about that every night and you can't either, until we have an answer.
I, I understand that.
Until we have an answer.
But I think that's very important. If it's a vote of the town, then if you're going to overturn it, that it should be going back to town for a vote because, you know, you just can't say, oh, we don't, we're just gonna put it there anyway.
We're gonna take direction from Town Council.
Can I, can I ask a conservation question?
We need, we need to move on.
So thank you for sending that off to Town Council for us. Thank you for passing our memo on to- I don't mind us answering a question if it's-
We are at 8:10.
Yeah, go out there and ask it.
You wanna go out there and ask who?
Yeah, I-
Yeah, we're fine with that.
And you know what? We're, we're, we're not, we understand all sides of the equation.
Yes, that.
Yeah, it's clear to me, even from watching and listening at the last meeting, the, the August meeting, that, you know, a lot of time has been put into this.
Yeah, you approved it last, but you didn't sign it. I wasn't here to tell you to sign it.
We voted on that one. Look, we resumed, weren't we, as I said?
I resumed.
Yeah, yeah. So if you wanna make a copy of that, so that she has at least that.
Yes, thank you.
But then you want something from Town Council too, right?
We are, and we will keep you posted on where this other stuff, we're waiting for a legal opinion from Town Council. And we'll, once we accept it, we'll gladly share it and then we have to make a decision how to report that way.
And if anybody at the board end here has any more questions about memos or if anything comes back as a question-
They will say, I'm gonna reread it tomorrow with the other guy.
Yeah, well, I mean, even, even if you get questions back from Town Council or engineers or whoever, you know, feel free to call us.
Absolutely.
Thanks for taking the time to-
Thank you.
And we understand this is very controversial and exhausting. But we need to have common sense prevail.
I'm not sure if the landfill was, you know, any easier or-
I was there for that one and I don't think so.
Yeah.
Yep, I don't think so at all.
Thanks, guys.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming in on short terms, on short notice. Twenty seconds.
Yes, speaking of, does anybody call you? Paul. Hmm? Don't know. You told me about it. Yeah. Hmm?
Okay, well, and that's the whole.
She's, she's just photocopying that for Becky. It's really just from this report, no?
No committee reports.
I think on our oil type.
I saw that, that's great. I did just read that in Nicole's report.
Yes.
So that's a positive.
Yeah, excellent.
And RJ McDonald already put oil in.
Good.
Excellent.
And the fire escape?
The fire escape, uh, we have to talk to the architect that took the pictures. They aren't clear enough for us to be able to determine everything that he mentioned.
He wants, okay.
Um, but I don't think it can happen, uh, before winter.
Yeah, maybe not.
Because we have to come from, to you for any money.
From money, yeah.
Um, but Peter is calling, Schmidt is an architect. He's calling the architect.
Okay, so will you get pricing for what it's gonna, what it will involve and then come back to us?
Well, I think we'll get one person's opinion about what the price might be.
Yeah, okay.
And then, um, talk to you about where you would be looking for money. Because if it's going to a town meeting, that's way out.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and it depends on the amount of money involved. But everyone costs $6,000.
Oh, we don't have anything to talk about this. Um, so, um, I think we're gonna defer Nicole's review to the next meeting.
Yep, yep.
So do we need to submit something to you so far, our stipends? Do we need to submit something for you or what?
No, I'm, I'm just gonna go do what I, what Jen does and it's quarterly, so at the end of September-
That's what I was gonna bring up tonight, is like just do them.
No, I'm just gonna copy Jen and-
Just do them quarterly.
Yeah, so you'll just get them.
Okay.
In the mail.
Um, so I signed this, is there anything else we need to sign?
Uh, no.
Okay, so onto your report.
Okay, so the USDA update, which will be on every report going forward, it'll be the first thing. We went out to bid for Project 1 on Wednesday, September 7th. We have approximately 10 bid requests thus far. We have a pre-bid conference this Wednesday, September 14th at 9:00 AM at the site. And DBC has submitted NOI to Conservation Commission on the Town of Hardwick's behalf for the proposed pump station. The hearing was set for the September meeting, but due to the fact that we're moving sites, it'll be now at the October meeting. Uh, so we wrote the retirement insurance policy once it comes back from council and I would like to get it on the Personnel Committee and get it finally approved from Board of Selectmen so we can just get it into the-
Can we see that before?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I would, I mean, I don't know about, but if the Personnel Committee's gonna approve it, then we may want a little say in it, just to make sure.
Well, are you guys this Personnel Committee too?
We are, that's why I'm saying, is there, like, can we-
Once I get it back from council, then I'll send it off to you guys.
Okay, okay.
Um, DLS, Department of Local Services, under the, under the umbrella of Department of Revenue, came out to do interviews for a financial review. We haven't had one done formally since 2011. Their initial impression was that they feel optimistic on where the town is headed and the accomplishments. Um, the formal review that they give to us after we submit documents to them will take up to 12 weeks. They still have to talk to the Chair of the Finance Committee, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen and the Account, and that is happening this week. Um, OSRP update, so Open Space and Rec Plan update. We need a planning committee to work with CMRPC. This is kind of like fallen by the wayside because it's not happening until the fall anyway. But, um, we do need recruits if anybody would like to be on the committee. Um, this is gonna allow us to apply for grants for park and rec. So literally for, um, park equipment and things like that. Um, the townhouse. The fire escape inspection was conducted and approved for the fair but needs some repairs and we are looking into. The boilers were installed and inspected by RJ McDonald on September 8th and have been ready to use for winter.
You put oil in already.
Oh, you did? Good, okay. Uh, the fleet of computers and servers are in. CM Geeks is working daily setting up and installing new workstations. We are prioritizing the oldest to newest. Staff seem incredibly happy to have new, fast computers. I had a legislative subcommittee on September 8th. We are currently prioritizing goals and objectives to be clear and concise when we present to our legislators. We are all in agreement that our small towns are integral to the Commonwealth and maintain that we will be a collective voice and do our due diligence in receiving fair and equitable services. So it's the same complaint all around, you know, that none of us are getting what we need. Um, we're, we're left behind on Beacon Hill, anybody west of, of Worcester. And so this isn't something that's, um, you know, only for Hardwick. I mean, I'm on this committee that's for, with a bunch of towns. So we have that, we're working on that. And then this Friday, I have a bylaw committee, so it's also through Stan. So I have a committee meeting on Friday. Um, accountant, shared services. So I was looking into the accountant, right? So we had looked at it before, we couldn't find an accountant. We ended up going with Melanson. It's still been on, really in the front burner of my mind because it's really hard having shared services and not having an in-house accountant. So I was working with Sherry Patch from Princeton and CMRPC to develop shared services, um, for two towns. So, uh, we, we created a job description and intermunicipal agreement and I talked with DLS when they were here about it. And he said, absolutely, we would suggest that, we're, we would suggest that now. However, will 16 to 20 hours be, 20 hours each week for, for each town be adequate? So I did reach out to Lori, the Lolio, to see if she thinks that 16 to 20 hours is dedicated, right? So this isn't, this isn't like working out for this town, working out for that town. This is dedicated to us and then dedicated to them and it'd clearly be available, you know, for emergencies. And, um, so I haven't heard back yet. I actually didn't get a chance to call her. She, she emailed me back, but I didn't get a chance to call her back. So I wanted to see what her, um, impression is. Uh, but, you know, here we are with shared services all around the state, that's all they want to do. It seems like they, you know, they would rather just throw, you know, two towns together than really care about our individual, you know, so-
I would be very concerned about 20 hours a week, um, 16 to 20.
Well, I don't even know that we get it now, so-
Right, to, just because of the project and because of everything else and trying to get, you know, everyone on track in the financial department. I think this would concern me right now.
So the thing is, if we, our thought was that if we're gonna pay a good salary, we're gonna get a heck of a good accountant. I mean, I know, I know some accountants that would probably be willing to leave their single municipality for something for a good salary. But that, now I sent the AMA over to, um, DLS because they wanna look at it. There's some language that needs to be in all AMAs. So he asked me to send, actually, I have to send all of them. So COA, Building Inspector, um, Police, they all have to go. He said there's some language, there are ethics that I guess they're trying to fight, like they have to, they have to be looked at and have to be integrated. So the next thing brings me to the recycling, the container contract. Um, I forgot to look at exactly when she signed that, but, um, our recycling coordinator signed a contract with a container company to rent a container that our recycling goes in. So it's not the same company, doesn't bring in your container and take, and, um, take away your recycling. So it was just sitting there and then the recycling, whoever it is, what, you know, Waste Management or whoever would come in, dump it, put it back and leave. So it was getting very expensive because the recycling company stopped coming. So they just stopped coming altogether. I don't know what company it was. And so the recycling coordinator looked around to get, you know, to get another recycling company to come in and found somebody that actually leaves their container there. It's less money and then they, you know, they pay for their recycling. And so she called the container company that we're renting from to come and have them taken away, to where he responded, you have a five-year contract, you have four years left or three and a half years left, and the only way to get out of it is to pay us out. So then I responded and said that this recycling coordinator does not have the authority to sign any contract at all for the town and therefore null and void with, uh, you know, the attorney, our attorney, our counsel agreed and supported that. And so then I got an email back from the, oh, I don't know if it's owner of the company, but contacted the company that said, they don't care who signed it. It's not their job to know who signed it, then somebody signed it. To what our attorney said, no, it is their job to know who can assign, who can sign it. You can't just have anybody sign it. You know, you've gotta have the legal authority sign it. We, you know, so we can go back and forth, but you might wanna look at trying to come to a conclusion mutually and pay them out, but not obviously what we owe, which is $9,400. And this is why these department head meetings are so important, that so few attend and, you know, I've been very patient so far that, you know, that people don't come. And it was supposed to be last week, but I did training, so I had to make it for tomorrow. But, um, you know, so, so I can reiterate this to people, that, you know-
We have to find a date. I'm supposed to do one in September, right? Snacks with the selectmen or whatever.
Okay.
I'll reach out to you tomorrow, find a date in the afternoon. Because I could reiterate the importance of, you know.
Well, then everything has to go through this office.
You know.